Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the Fridley School Board Meeting, September 15th at 7:30. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, I would like to start with approval for agenda with suggested motions and resolutions. Moved by Stark?
Second.
Seconded by Adam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we'd like to do Spotlight of Recognition. Dr. Heil.
Good evening Chair Peruido and Board members. It's with honor tonight that I would like to highlight some of our opening workshop highlights that we had this year. First, we would like to welcome our new staff from each building. We were able to hold our opening ceremonies via streaming. So, we're going to show you pictures of our new staff representing each building once it comes up. Okay, here we go. Alright, so here introducing, these are our new staff representing Hayes Elementary. Next, we have new staff representing Stevenson Elementary. New staff for Fridley Middle School. New staff for Fridley High School. And then, new staff for ALC. And as I say every year, they look younger and younger every year that they come in. So now, we are so honored, honored to represent, speak and honor our employees who have served 25 years of service at Fridley Public Schools. So first, we want to talk about Blair Berger. So Blair Berger at the Fridley Middle School has been a leader in our Performing Arts Department for 25 years. He's built a program that has helped students develop a love for music, band, choir, and performing. He builds deep connections and relationships with his students and goes above and beyond to help students find their passion. He's also the advisor for our Builders Club, leading students in many community service projects. He's a team leader for our Encore Department, helps organize our Annual Veterans Day Program, and has coached many sports within Fridley. Blair is also a true heart, has a true heart for Fridley Community, and he has three sons that all attend Fridley Schools. Blair's hard work, dedication, and passion for Fridley Public Schools does not go unnoticed, and he's highly valued by his colleagues. Next, we have a representative from Stevenson who has served 25 years. For Kim Gardner, physical education is her specialty, and people are her passion. She's a dedicated staff member who develops strong relationships with each and every one of her students, and not only know their names, but also who they are as individual. She's known to jump quickly into action when there's no, when there's an idea, a need, or an absence to fill. She's a great teammate and colleague. When it comes to her craft, she seeks out and gets equipment for students so they can experience physical activities that they may be for the first time for them. From a class set of bikes to skateboards to skis, the students get to try it all. Kim volunteers prep at the end of her day to invite students who struggle during the day to earn open gym. Next, we have a representative from Hayes. Margot Rothenbacher has a heart larger than life, listening ears and never get tired, and throughout her career, has always been determined to serve her scholars through problem solving, any situation, and comes their way. For over 25 years, she's been a dependable colleague, a skilled professional, and a master of building lasting relationships. Margot has given so much of herself to be the best teacher and school counselor for her students and families. There's no situation Margot cannot support or serve her students well in. For this reason, she has deserved much time off for herself in her retirement. At Hayes Elementary, as they always say, once a giraffe, always a giraffe. So even though a chapter is closing for her, we know that we'll all see her again soon. Next, the one and only representing Fridley High School, Jim Young. Jim Young has served as a parent educator for Fridley Public Schools for 25 years. As a high school student, of course, Jim was a Fridley High School graduate. Jim has been a strong supporter of our schools through his work as well through his involvement in the community through the Fridley Lions, whose organization has been such a strong supporter of Fridley Schools. Jim upholds the tiger spirit of kindness and support that greatly affects students and staff in so many positive and different ways. He literally bleeds black and gold, and is one of the most dedicated members of the Fridley Community. Jim has a great sense of humor and shares it every day. He's always flexible and will agree to take on any job with a smile. Jim always provides a sense of calm in the midst of chaos and builds strong individual relationships with students and staff. Jim can be described as kind, sincere, and giving as he deeply cares for our students, our staff, and our Fridley Community. So I would like to say thank you for your years of experience to all four of our 25-year employees. Next, we are quite excited to present our Teachers of Excellence for 2019-2020. Sarah Armstrong, representing Hayes Elementary, is extremely intelligent with above and beyond leadership. Stepped up during a distance learning in the spring, she leads the way in teaching students online. Throughout the spring, she continued to help students, families, and teachers in navigating through the technology. She is also a teacher leader throughout the building. Congratulations to Sarah. Next, we have Brittany Brett representing from Stevenson. She's an outstanding educator with creativity, leadership, and delivers incredible instruction. She is kind and works hard to build relationship. She also inspires others to work harder. She is a constant giver of support for her team and helps wherever and whenever able. She also believes in her students and gives them high expectations. Congratulations to Brittany. Next, we have Mr. Drew Ryder representing from Fridley Middle School. He demonstrates all of the IB profile characteristics. He's caring and builds a relationship with students and families. He advocates for students. He attends outside student events even on weekends. He's a risk taker and has served as an IL coach and team leader. He is knowledgeable and a thinker, and he's able to be creative with his lesson plans. He is open-minded and helps other find strategies to help students whenever possible. Congratulations to Drew. Next, we have Alyssa Lowry from Fridley High School. She's committed to excellence in her classroom, and she's a passionate leader. She demonstrates a deep commitment to her students and engages with students outside of the classroom. She is talented and a reflective colleague and friend. She's a leader of her team and is a one-person prom committee. She also leads morale boosters in the buildings. Congratulations to Alyssa. Next, we have Ashton Brask from our preschool program. She provides an excellent start to preschoolers on their educational journey. She seeks out new resources for the entire school. During distance learning, she stepped up and taught new tools to all of the teachers and inspires her, inspired her team. She always has a smile and compassion for all. Congratulations to Ashton. Next, with, I would like to introduce our Employee of the Year. Sarah Burkhart was announced as Fridley Public Schools' Employee of the Year. She captures images of our students and staff throughout the district. She has a keen eye for capturing precious moments, highlighting the joys of our students' experience in their education. She creates murals, newsletters, bulletin, and narrates some of our district videos. She has helped redesign the district website and updates our social media posts for the district. During our quarantine, she created the 20 for 20 that highlighted our class of 2020. She exhibits the IB profile and is so talented and collaborative. Congratulations to our Sarah, and congratulations to all of our amazing Fridley staff. Next, I'd like to share with you, this coming Friday is Fridley Spirit Day. So for all staff and students and community members, online or in person, it's Friday, September 18th. So wear your black and gold and share your photos at hashtag FridleySpiritDay2020. And last but not least, we still have some of our regular rituals. The Fridley Schools' Foundation Fourth Annual Get Your Paws Moving Walk, it will, of course, will be virtual this year. You can register for $10 to get a mask and take your walk virtually. You can register now through October 2nd, and for more information, check out the district website. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's wonderful to see all that. And next, we are going to move into Superintendent and Staff Reports with the school opening highlights with Jaiel McLemore.
Thank you Board Chair Peruido, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Heil, and Lori Andler. I have the pleasure of introducing a video today. This one is a little bit shorter than what we normally do, just simply because of the circumstances under which we are opening schools. And I just want to again congratulate all our teachers and staff on the recognition that they received during the opening workshop. And what an amazing choice for Employee of the Year. I had to put that plug in because some of the images you're going to see there are images that Sarah captures throughout the school year, opening, during this week, they were out there in schools along with David. They are taking pictures. And as many of you know, we are opening in a hybrid model. So that means that about 50% of our students are not in school, and those who are there, another 50% are not coming on school on the same day just to, you know, comply with the social distancing requirements that, you know, the pandemic has forced us to open schools under. So it's really an opportunity to just acknowledge in pictures, the hard work that people have been doing, staff members have been doing in the last couple of months to prepare to welcome kids to school. If you have come into any of our buildings, you see the markers outside where you can line three feet, six feet apart. As I was leaving the office to come to the school board meeting, there were parents outside Fridley High School picking up meals for their students. So those are some of the things that we've had to do just to make sure that we are continuing to provide services that our families need, even though school doesn't look the same as it has done in the past. So, thank you to all the staff members and their hard work. And it looks different, but we are still Fridley Strong and going strong, and we are super excited to actually see kids back in school after almost five months of not having them with us.
So nice to see those smiling faces. Everybody's excited for school. Next, I'm sorry, Mr. Petrofsky, you need to follow that up with talking about World's Best Workforce.
Challenge accepted, right? Board Chair Peruido, School Board members, Superintendent Heil, and Ms. Andler, this is our annual World's Best Workforce Report that we do each year. Yeah, so each year, we take some time at a board work session to thoroughly go through some of the details of these plans, and then there's another presentation at our business meeting here. And I want to take you to the Model of Operational Effectiveness. And in the lower right-hand corner, we've got a box that we entitled "Programic Accountability," and it's there where the World's Best Workforce Plan lives, along with the Achievement and Integration Plan, Read Well by Grade III, and then the Title Reporting that we do. And as you know, those measures, those mechanisms feed into our program vision and the programs that we offer for kids. And then, we do a number of data tracking throughout the year. I like to think about these three reports as being interconnected, and in fact, the Read Well Plan and the A&amp;I Plan really feed into the World's Best Workforce. There are six areas to the World's Best Workforce that we rate goals for and track each year. Kindergarten readiness, third grade reading levels, and reading at grade level by grade three. And then, we look at achievement disparities, and that, those can be gaps that we're seeking to close based on ethnic groups or economics. And then, we look at college and career readiness, graduation rates, and then equitable access to excellent teachers. And as I mentioned at another meeting, a lot of the pieces of A&amp;I fit right in with the World's Best Workforce. It's as though A&amp;I kind of feeds into that. So, in your packets tonight, there are three sections to the World's Best Workforce Plan. The introduction deals with some of the specifics of the World's Best Workforce Plan. That would be summarizing the goals that I just recited, and then the goals and the results themselves. And then, the last section is the lengthier part of the plan is actually the program supporting details that we have, all the things that go on within our district to support that work. So let's just take a minute and take a quick look at the results, which I know you are aware were somewhat, they were missing a little bit, right, from last year, and not having a chance to do a lot of testing. So we do have some winter results that we'll look at though. So our first goal deals with kindergarten readiness and letter sounds, and we use the TS Gold assessment for that. And when we assessed our kindergarteners in the winter, 81.5% of our kids had met the goal, and we had set that target at 80%. And as you know, this is our second year moving into working with TS Gold. Our Read Well Plan is looking at MCA proficiency based on the adaptive reading measure, and we changed that benchmark to be at the 55th percentile. So we're hoping that about 55% of our kids will reach that goal, and when we did it in the winter, we were at 43.5. Our disparities with free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch, we weren't able to measure that this year because of COVID. We did not do the MCAs. But we do have some historical information there, so the data that we used in 2019 will be used to set the goal for next year. We use the ACT for college and career readiness, and again, last year, we did not do it. So we're going to use the 2019 metric again to look at that for the next year. And then, high school graduation rates, we increased to 83.6 in 2019. And data for the 2020 graduation isn't available yet. That usually happens around November, December, something like that. So we take a look at the disproportionality rate in suspensions each year, and we can see how that was lowered a little bit last year. Probably has something to do with the fact that maybe we weren't in school for part of the time. But we are switching that goal for the next period of time, and we're going to be looking at enrollment of our Black students in accelerated courses and rigorous courses at the high school level. We'll be looking at DP participation, full DP participation, concurrent enrollment, and then PSAO as well. So that concludes my World's Best Workforce Plan for 2021 school year. And if there aren't any questions, thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to move on to Business Action Items. And our first thing is a resolution for accepting gifts. Every month, we are lucky to receive gifts from people. Whereas, the School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district. And whereas Minnesota Statute 463, I'm sorry, 465.03 states the School Board may accept a gift, grant, or a device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary for a total of $1,530, Ming Co. Products Incorporated and Wells Fargo Community Fund. The following persons donated to the Fridley Public Schools, Kenneth Vicin, $100 in memory of Tyler Christensen, and Fridley Lions gift cards for new elementary teachers. Is there a motion to accept? Motion by Thornton, second, and by Stark to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Because it's a resolution, I will call the roll. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnap?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Ms. Jean?
Aye.
And Ms. Peruido?
Aye.
All in favor? And the motion passes. Second, we have Resolution on Fund Balance. Mr. Hoffman?
Good evening Chair Peruido, members of School Board, Superintendent Heil. First up here, we have a resolution regarding fund balance transfers. This past spring in the legislative session, flexibility was put in place for school districts to transfer funds that were otherwise restricted to other purposes as part of all the changes that happened through the spring with COVID-19 and the pandemic. So in working through these numbers during our audit prep and closing the books, we are recommending a transfer with the intended purpose to offset deficits incurred by community education due to the lost revenues of their programming while they were still maintaining and paying staff through that timeframe. The funds that we're transferring or recommending to transfer are funds that accumulated also because the activities didn't happen. We didn't have summer school. We didn't have different pieces. So we've accumulated resources as a result of that. So the resolution is part of the process to formally request that transfer from MDE. So I'll open up for questions. Otherwise, I would recommend that the Board approve the resolution authorizing the school district administration to submit the attached transfer to MDE.
Any questions? Whereas, the School Board of Fridley Public Schools Independent School District Number 14 has determined that the criteria identified under Section 8 have been satisfied for a fund transfer pursuant to Minnesota laws 2020, Chapter 116, House File 4415, Article 3. Whereas, the School Board of Independent School District has reviewed and approved the attached request for fund transfer, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 14 authorizes the school district administration to submit the attached request for fund transfer. Do I have anyone who would like to approve that?
Motion moved by, sorry, motion moved.
Motion by Adam? Second?
Second.
Second and by Stark?
Third.
I'm sorry. You guys are too close to me. Alright. And we will call the roll as that is a resolution. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnap?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Ms. Jean?
Aye.
Ms. Peruido?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. And you are going to talk to us about a tax levy as well.
Yes. So we're also at that time in the year where it's an annual process for preliminary certifying our tax levy. So the process gets started during the summer. The district submits and reports different information to MDE to generate the levy reports. We are required to certify at the end of September our preliminary levy. So we'll pass that on to the county, and then they use that in generating the initial tax statements that taxpayers will receive this November. And then, we have a truth and taxation hearing in December. So our truth and taxation hearing is going to be December 15th at 7:00 PM. And during that time, we'll discuss the levy, open it up for public comment and questions. And then, in December, the final process is the Board would certify the final levy, which then sets the taxes for what the taxpayers would pay in the next calendar year. So just with our levies too, these are all either voter approved or authorized in statute. So just as an awareness, school districts don't set these arbitrarily. They're either voter approved or statute driven. So there's two ways we can certify the preliminary levy, either as maximum, which is what we're recommending tonight, or as a flat dollar amount. The reason why we're recommending maximum is we're still early in these levy calcs at the MDE level, so the report's changing daily. So we want to make sure by certifying the maximum that we're going to be able to maximize the formulas available to us. So I'll open up for any questions. Otherwise, we would recommend that the Board of Education approve the proposed 2020 payable 2021 property tax levy as maximum and certify to the county auditor.
Thank you so much. So the motion is to approve the proposed 2020 payable 2021 property tax levy as maximum and certify the levy to the county auditor. And motion?
So moved.
Motion by Stark?
Second.
Second and by Carnap? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to invite Laura Cypher-Hurtling up for a second reading and adoption of policies.
School Board Chair Peruido, members of School Board, Superintendent Heil, thank you for letting me come and present the second reading of Policy 695 Tele-Related Services. This is a new policy this year based on us being in a situation where we have distance learners, and there have been no changes since the first reading.
Wonderful. Thank you. And can I get somebody to approve the motion? Motion by Stark, second and by Thornton, to approve the second reading and adoption of Policy 9, I'm sorry, 695. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we move on to the Consent Agenda. And every month, we approve all the Agenda of Routine Action Items, including the minutes of the regular school board meeting, the work session that was held on August 18th, 2020, and the work session held on September 1st. Monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements, memorandum of agreement with the Independent School District 14, and with the Fridley Education Association regarding additional art teacher hours and ECFE teacher hours, and the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. And would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Stark, seconded by Adam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. And the motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to written information, and we're going to talk student enrollment. Dr. Heil?
Thank you. I just wanted to share today our beginning enrollment for Fridley Public Schools as of September 1st. We're currently sitting at, as of September 1st, 2,931 students. So at this current time, we're seeing an increase of about 100 students than we have had in the past. So we have a strong enrollment at this time. So it's good to be able to share that.
Awesome. Thank you. And we're going to talk first readings of policies. Dr. Heil, Policy 104?
Thank you. I would like to present for first reading this evening, Policy 104, which is the School District 14 Mission Statement. Basically, the only change that has taken place on this policy is that we have replaced the old school board priorities with the current priorities that the school board has recently updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Policy 105, Mr. Keeler?
Thank you. Board Chair Peruido, Board members, and Superintendent Heil, I come before you to give you an update on the first reading for our Policy 105, which is our Equity and Inclusion Policy. Couple changes for you that are of note. Page 1, we've added some language around, wording around adding equity and inclusion to a sentence, and then the word anti-racist to that section. And then, on page 2, in the final paragraph, we have an additional defining terms for differing, adding language to talk about historical foundations and persistent barriers that students face, including the intersections of race and racism in schools. And then, on page 2, also in the definitions area, we've added proposed definitions of anti-racist and then racism in that section. And then, the final change that we are looking at here is on page 3, and that adds something in Item B there for leadership, adding a sentence that makes it align with the paragraph that we're adding on the first page. At this time, are there any questions for those changes? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to reports from School Board members. We will talk about the Northeast Metro 916 Meeting. Ms. Stark?
Yes, we talked mostly about the COVID update. They are improving teacher and student access to, access to technology. They're doing this through a one-on-one mobile deployment, which is similar to what we've done, making sure that each of our students has a Chromebook. They have some new remote teaching tools that are available to them. Remind is similar to Google Voice. Explain Everything is a remote whiteboard to use for remote teaching. Paradek assists with interactive remote presentations, and Go Guardian is a remote classroom management tool. We've also, we also discussed district infrastructure upgrades, server replacements, connectivity improvements, that sort of thing for the online learning. And then, working with funding from the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund and the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund to go towards additional technology and improving student teacher ratios. Summer school programming, mental health needs, and serving historically underserved populations. And the Corona Relief Funds are going towards operational costs and additional technology. They are also redesigning the staff onboarding process, and the big news was that the superintendent is retiring and that search will and that search will be starting shortly. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on. The AMSD Meeting held on September eleventh. Dr. Hile?
Thank you. This is a summary of the Association of Metropolitan School District Meeting that was held. There was a guest speaker, Peter Leatherman of the Morris Leatherman Company. Morris Leatherman Company has completed Minnesota statewide surveys that provide the state and institutions on how Minnesota's citizens are feeling on various topics in the state. Approximately eleven hundred people were surveyed from August thirty-first through September eighth, so it's very fresh data that has been shared. Some of the information that was shared was that overall, it was good news is that there's still support for future funding for schools. Sixty percent of people surveyed felt that the state of Minnesota was going in the right direction. In the area of being concerned around COVID, it was equal split. Thirty-three percent were very concerned. Thirty-five percent were somewhat concerned. And thirty-one percent were not too or not at all concerned. So it still reflects two-thirds of the people did have some concern around COVID. For the most important state issues in the past, the top ones have been concerned around economy and jobs, K through twelve education, and reducing in spending with taxes. Currently, the top areas reaching double digits for this year for percentages was reducing crime, improving economy and jobs, reducing healthcare costs, addressing racial injustice, and improving K-12 education. The question around adequacy in funding Minnesota schools, forty-five percent said yes, that it was well done. And we have fifty-three percent that said no, and two percent unsure. So it did show that overall, people were willing to support schools. And it showed that additionally, they would support spending ten to fifteen dollars a month to support education. Thank you.
Next, our important future school board dates. We have the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting taking place on September sixteenth. Schools for Equity in Education on September eighteenth. The Fridley Public Schools Work Session is going to be on October sixth. And our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be held here October twentieth, 2020. And I would just like to take a minute to thank all the teachers, the paras, administration, custodians, all the employees, everybody who has had any part of bringing the kids back for school and the distance learning, our technology, and just a big shout out and thank you as a parent and as a school board. So we really appreciate all of you. And at that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Carnap, second and by Thornton. We, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned at eight oh three. Thank you.